Thanks, everybody, for attending this evening. I will call to order the Lower Paxton Township Board of Supervisors workshop meeting for Tuesday, July 8th at 7:00 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by interim manager Tom Verno.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, public comment? Is there any public comment this evening? I will be keeping track of time, just so you know. I'll be raising my hand at five minutes, but please continue to speak until you're done. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Patrick Bradnick. I live at 3703 Rutherford Street. Good evening, Chairman, or Chairperson, Supervisors and Township Staff. My name is Patrick Bradnick, and I come before this board to present donations to the Township Police and Fire Departments. As a Second Class Scout with Troop 23 from St. Catherine's, we are wrapping up our spring fundraisers, selling discount coupon cards in order to help pay our own way to attend summer camp. This year's trip is to Summit Bechtel in the heart of West Virginia. While walking door-to-door selling cards as they do every year, I offer the option of purchasing a card to be gifted to local responders if they do not want one for themselves. This year, I have sold a little over 200 cards, and 70 of those were donation cards, which will be spread out across different townships. The Scouts Program teaches us all to be active and involved in our communities. You do not always need a special uniform. All you need is the desire to make the world a better place. When each of us steps up, it creates a community like no other. With that being said, I would like to present the Fire Chief, as well as the Police Chief, Public Safety Director, 25 donated discount cards, which is a $125 value to be given out to the brave police firefighter and firefighters that give their time and compassion to not only the residents, but tourists and visitors as well.
Thank you very much, Patrick. Well, that's amazing, to collect 200 cards. How many doors did you have to knock, Patrick?
A lot.
A lot. Thank you for doing this, and thank you for your service to the community. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Supervisors. My name is Larry Pickens, and I'm the Executive Director at the Pennsylvania Council of Churches, 900 South Arlington Avenue. And I think I kind of have the answer to my question, but first of all, I just want to thank the Supervisors and staff for assistance that you have given us previously around some zoning issues, and also for the support that was provided last year when we initiated a local share municipal grant, and we were provided with support by the Supervisor. So my question is, given the present transition period, to whom should we direct a request for cosponsorship in the event we are going to apply this year, so that we can do so in a timely fashion? So now that I see there's an interim manager, I suspect he's the person that we should approach regarding that, or how should we move forward?
Yes, I believe so, that prior requests were directed to the prior manager, so please go ahead and forward them to Mr. Verno.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Bostick?
Good evening, everybody. For those who have seen me around town or online, you know something's up when I get dressed up, usually only for funerals or major addresses to people, so, just kidding. Yeah, what I'd like to do is just get some audience participation, just for a second, to start out, and what I'd like you to do is just look to your left and your right, and think about who you're looking at. And hopefully, what you see is not a Democrat or Republican, but what you see is a fellow human being, someone else who's living on Earth with you, and that everyone in this room probably is a Lower Paxtonian. And, you know, we all desire to have the same services that local government provides, to make our community livable and a place that's enjoyable to be in. And some of us have a chance to be Lingustonians, which just simply means that we have a chance to be a citizen of the capital of Lower Paxton Township. But at the township level, I mean, it's all about creating a livable situation, and I just want to suggest that it's not, it's very difficult, you look at services like police, fire, sewer, water, roads, parks, to turn those into political entities. I mean, I don't know how you get political with sewage, just as impossible. So that really, you know, the board we have here now, anyone that's a volunteer with the township really is a public servant, that's what it comes down to. And when you, just a couple of things as far as how things work in our country, as my notes go away. There we go. You know, when you look at the Constitution, the preamble, it says, "We, the people," that's the first three words of the preamble to the United States Constitution, and these words signify that the power of the United States government originates from the citizens, right? In other words, people hold the ultimate authority and legitimacy of the government. So it's one of those deals where it's from the citizens on up. We work through our governmental representatives that we elect. Now contrast that with President Abraham Lincoln, who once said, "America will never be destroyed from the outside." If we falter and lose our freedoms, it'll be because we destroyed ourselves. And what I'm going to suggest tonight is that we start to avoid this destroying ourselves. The last six months have been very tough. They're certainly light at the end of the tunnel, and I'm happy for that. But that we, that we, those who are here in the room, those who are watching on TV, that we start to move towards creating a new vision for Lower Paxton Township, and move away from finger pointing, finding fault, getting in arguments, having meetings that are really out of order at times. Fortunately, they're getting much, much better now. So the real thing is creating a vision, turning a new page on the way we do things in Lower Paxton Township. And I can, I don't have a vision for the township, that's not my job. I think we all need to do that collectively, working with our public officials. But I do have a couple of things I want to mention in closing that are coming down the pike, that we need to pay attention to, move away from all the other stuff that's been happening, and pay attention to this kind of thing. The first one is, we have a Township Manager, and probably at some point, an Assistant Manager to hire, and do a search and all that kind of thing. In some communities, even the public at times is involved, you know, I've seen where they have a social event or some sort of meet and greet with the top picks and that type of thing. So we may have a chance, we may not, that's up to the board. But that's a major thing, because the board has to work through the Township Manager. If you don't have a good Township Manager, a good match, we have problems, and we experienced some of that recently. So that's the first one. The second one is, the general election coming up. Again, we have an opportunity to fill four out of five seats, and I hope, again, that when we get into the election season, usually starts after Labor Day, that the candidates focus on that vision, what they see, what they feel or want to see the Township move to, and work on, and develop, and make better, versus all the political stuff. Again, it's hard to term regular public services into political fodder. Hopefully, we can stay away from that in this general election. Another one that's working its way through the Township is, I believe it's a 1,000-home development east of Lingustown. I haven't had, because I'm a one-man operation with my news program, I haven't had a chance to look at the plans. I did get word from some of the Planning Commission members that that's in the works. But when you think about 1,000 homes, that's a major influx of cars, people, impacts on the school, and everything else. So that's something we need, go ahead.
No, I was just saying five minutes.
All five minutes, okay, I'm almost done.
Please continue.
Then we have, another major one is the redevelopment of Colonial Park Mall. And I go to the mall with my granddaughter who has autism. We love to run around there, because there's no one there, you know, there's room to bounce around, she can do all kinds of stuff, go to the pet store, but that's not what we want for this mall. It's a big space, and we don't want it to deteriorate like it's happened in many places around the state. They don't pay their taxes, the buildings start to become decrepit, and all kinds of stuff happens. So as a community, I think we need to work on that mall, and figure out how we can encourage appropriate development. The last one is a suggestion that Jay Purdy, my friend, made, and that is, look at the transition of Lower Paxton Township from a Second Class Township to a First Class Township. The Second Class Township, as I read the information in state government regulations, seems to be more for small municipalities. We've outgrown that. And then I think about Hodges Heights. You know, if we go to a First Class Township situation, there is going to be a ward, they'll break the township into wards similar to the school board where they have regions. So odds are, you know, we have people from Hodges Heights come in here and get upset about lack of things happening, taking too long. They're going to have a representative under a First Class Township setup, someone that's lives in that neighborhood or close to it. And there's other areas of the Township as well that are underrepresented because of, or a big township and it's hard to do that with just five people, so the First Class Township would sort of encourage that. One last point I want to make, and then I'll sit down, take my tie off and get comfortable. Basically, I just wanted to say, I plan to turn a new page when it comes to the Township, and I hope everyone in the room tonight will join me as well. One last thing, I'm going to volunteer right now, but when the New Year turns over, I want to put my name in for the vacancy board. The reason I'm doing that, recently, as I considered running or getting involved with the Township Supervisors Board, I became an unaffiliated voter. So I have no allegiance to any party. I think it's not that I'm a special person, but having that political position of unaffiliated may help when it comes time, if it's ever used again, which probably it won't, but hopefully it won't. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bostick. Mr. Minsker?
Good evening, Supervisors, Staff, and ladies and gentlemen. I'm Bill Minsker, 5956 Lingustown Road, in the square of Lingustown. I'm before you this evening with my third of 10 projects that I would like to briefly introduce to you. This project I've been working on for four years. And before you, you have your third packet of papers, which I'd like to take you through briefly. These are prepared, that you can put them in to, hopefully, that blue notebook that you still have, that will keep growing as we go through these 10 projects. This project, as well as all nine other ones, I remind you, are for two purposes. First, to give recognition to our board and staff that we are doing something positive for the Township. Secondly, to do things that will be beneficial to the residents of the Township. All 10 of my projects are with that purpose in mind. This project, which you have before you, is a project dealing with traffic, and the next three presentations I will do for you in the next three weeks will also deal with traffic and related subjects. This project is a project that started four years ago, when I was still an active firefighter with Lingustown Fire Company, I was at that point, and for a number of prior years, I was a driver with our apparatus. And it was very frustrating for me, as we would have alarms and would proceed toward the west, on Lingustown Road, we would get to the huge intersection of Lingustown and Colonial Roads, and there was no traffic control device there to turn the traffic signals green. These devices, we have throughout the Township, and I'll explain them to you in a moment, but at that point, I had talked to Brad Gotchaw about the possibility of putting a traffic movement device on that intersection, and he suggested to me that I do a study of the Township to see where other ones could be placed also. I did that study, I presented it to the Supervisors, nothing resulted from that. Two years later, I did the study again, presented the study to the Supervisors, nothing was done. This is the third time now that I have run the Township, looking at every intersection that we have, and looking at those intersections as far as how traffic is controlled through them. And that's the study that you have in front of you at this point. These devices are called Intersection Movement Control Devices, IMCD, Intersection Movement Control Devices, and you've seen them in operation. There's a white light that on the fire apparatus, we have a control that when we activate it, the traffic signal in the direction that we are moving will turn green, to get the traffic out of that intersection. All the other traffic signals will turn red. So when we get to the intersection, we stop, and then we move through, but there's no traffic in front of us. At the Lingustown Colonial Road intersection, there is no device, and that's one of our biggest, major intersections in the Township. And that has been my primary focus, and we'll talk about that in just a moment. But that's what I'm presenting to you this evening, but an overview of the entire Township. Now, if you would take your papers, please, and look at page number two and page number three. Page number two and page number three. There are 10 Roman numeral intersections identified where in the Township we have traffic signals. Under those 10 Roman numeral intersections are 48 different roads that intersect on that road. So the Roman number is the road, the regular number is the street that intersects on that road. And then if you go across the page, you'll see there are four columns to identify for that road, whether there is nothing there, whether there is only a device for north-south movement, whether there's a device for east-west movement, or whether all directions are covered. And we'll go through that in just a moment. Now, go back, please, to the fourth page, the keys and the explanations of what you're about to look at. The red identified streets are the major streets. The blue identified streets are the cross streets at that major intersection. If there is an X in the column, that's the device situation for that particular street. If it says none, we have no device there at all. If there is a D, as you'll see at the bottom of the second page, there are some streets that are duplicates, so they don't count in the count of the number of devices that we're looking at overall. My color suggestions for placement, the ones that are in red are the ones that I feel are absolutely necessary, that we have that device. The device number at number three, at Colonial Road, Lingustown Road, is the most important, in my mind, and that has a double exclamation point next to it. The other red devices have a single exclamation point, that they should receive attention, if you so desire, as soon as possible. The red letter, LP and CP, is telling you the district, the fire district that that is in, either Lingustown, Colonial Park, or Paxtonia. And then the totals at the bottom. We have 48 intersections in our Township with traffic devices, 48 intersections. 13 of those intersections have IMCDs in all directions, 13 out of 48. 16 of those devices, 16 of those intersections have no control, and those are ones that I think are important. And that, going down the column then, you'll see where it totals 48. Now, if you would look very briefly at pages two and three, you'll see the 48, you'll see the 10 streets, the 48 intersections, and what the controls are at those particular intersections, if they exist, based on what the Xs will tell you. On my cover letter, on the sheet on top, page number one, under Project Number Three, I've given you three recommendations. Immediately, we install, as soon as possible, one of these devices at Lingustown and Colonial Road. One device. Then, recommendation number two, as soon as possible, eventually, we install eight different devices at those eight intersections that are identified. The rest of them, I don't think are busy enough that require the investment necessary for that type of thing. So I give this to you the third time. I give you this study to look at and decide whether or not you feel this is necessary, and whether there is funding available in which to do this particular addition to the intersections. In the next three weeks, I will have three other projects for you to consider, and I thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Minsker. Mr. Minsker, do you have any idea of the cost it would be to?
I don't, but Adam, maybe you do, because I know the Public Safety Committee has looked into this from the initial first study that I did. They're not cheap.
I won't give an exact figure, but it's extremely high, from what my recollections are, when you first gave these back, what, two years or so ago?
Four years ago.
I'm thinking that could be in the neighborhood of north of $400,000, but I reserve that comment to dig a little deeper, because it's been quite some time. But it is quite expensive, because those devices have to be put in every direction. So when you speak of Colonial Road and?
That would be a four-way.
That's four, four devices for that particular intersection. So it becomes quite expensive. We haven't revisited it, because at the time, we were looking into funding for that, and had not discovered any that could apply at that particular time. So it's probably worth a look again, but yes, that's what I recall from it.
Right. You'll notice on the study, there are a number of very not-so-busy intersections that have four-way devices. Some have two-way, but there are a number that have four-way, such as right up the street at Patton Road, where the bank is, where the Dunkin' Donuts is, that's a four-way controlled intersection. And there's not a lot of traffic that crosses Lingustown Road there. And then you go down to Lingustown and Colonial, and there's nothing. And really, this has been something on my mind for a long time, initially starting, as I said, with Lingustown Colonial Road, but really, it's something that throughout the Township, I think we need to look at.
Thank you, Mr. Minsker. And I would probably add that since 39 is a state road, too, maybe we can look into some state funding?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I think, if I'm not mistaken, any new intersection that's, any new traffic signal that's being put in, they add that to it automatically now. However, I'm not sure when the Colonial Road Lingustown was done. I will look into, to see if maybe we can get some assistance from PennDOT.
Well, the big traffic study that was done on Route 39 from the river to Hershey?
Correct.
And Route 743, those studies, both of those studies had recommendations in them to add these devices to key intersections. So I know there's been thinking about this, and I don't know anything about funding, I don't know whether the state helps with that, that it's not just a local municipality responsibility, but those are the details. I'm a concept person. This is a concept that I think is very important. The details we can work out in time.
I agree with you 100%.
Yes, and you're correct, there were, there was funding in the state budget a couple years ago for smart signals on 39. I think some of that money was allocated to the county, but I'm not aware of any progress that has been made with replacing those signals at this time. So we'll look into that.
Right.
Thank you. But I will definitely look into it, Mr. Minsker. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Mr. Miller?
William Miller, 4311 Crestview. I just wanted, I can piggyback, I wanted to thank Chief Kishiva, I mean, the amount of work that went into those fireworks. One can only imagine all the planning and getting everybody hooked together on that. But more so, as this Township grows, and I mentioned 1,000 homes and all those things, I believe the department's only going to get bigger. It's going to need more people, bigger than Harrisburg right now. So people, as we plan, and more things come into the Township, there's a lot more things, the sewers have to be able to have that capacity, and so on. But, you know, cars and personnel are very expensive, and equipment. The second item, I did talk with Bill Weaver over at the sewer department, and again, they're doing a lot of upkeep and repairs, and I think people should know that, they have no clue how, I think, how much goes into that department. They're always fixing things, replacing things, fixing your laterals when they come through, they had the bad vitreolic seals, and that was a big deal. And some other neighboring municipalities can almost put a person out of their home due to the cost of those upgrades. And I think we're extremely fortunate. People might complain about the cost, oh, there's another bond. It's those, it's that planning, and there's planned obsolescence in everything, that again, we're fortunate that in this Township, that's happening. And on the hydrants, again, somebody at the Public Works went out and actually put a red marker on that hydrant down there at Winfield, the one they couldn't find, and I whacked the heck out of that thing. In fact, I did every hydrant, I think I mentioned that, the whole way along Colonial down to Earl, to expose them. So if there's any others that are out there, I mean, I'm kind of retired, but I don't mind going out and having at it, at some more of these, because again, I like to see and adopt the hydrant program, you know, somebody near your house, get on it, take some time, send your kid out, just takes a minute. And I didn't hear back from Viola, and I'm not being negative with them, but it doesn't surprise me. But, you know, in Susquehanna, I do recall at one point, and other places, they get art teachers and people with artistic skills, remember, my palette is one red. But with that, you know, again, young people take interest and ownership of their environments, their neighborhoods, to maybe get them out there, and it's a group thing, and police are there, fire are there, and just make it look a little bit better, because we can do better on the hydrants. Again, you know, the Township, yeah, they're responsible for the markers. Viola is responsible for the paint and trimming around the ones that are rough cut, but I think that we could do that if we kind of just promoted some kind of a program like that. But again, if they would, you can get me a list, I can't do every single one, but I'd be more than glad to go out and, I mean, you can bang out four or five in a few hours. So I guess they have my information, your Township, I'm not off the radar, so I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Miller. I also want to let you know, I did drive on Rutherford, and I noticed the sidewalk that you were talking about the other day. I'm not sure if that is PennDOT right-of-way, but I will look into it a little further.
Maps, I did the, I went in a parcel.
The GIS, okay.
They go way up the hill.
Up the bank, okay.
And what PennDOT tells me, we're only responsible to the white line. So when the people that ride bikes on Colonial, between Goose Valley and Old Colonial, the trees that are laying there, the ones that are falling out into the road, who is really responsible for that? And somebody saw, and they, see, people have said things to me, it almost seems as if Goose Valley, Earl Drive, and a bunch of roads need a really good haircut. I mean, there's a lot of overhanging branches and vines, and again, whose responsibility is that? I came back from Lancaster today, from Linnis, and these guys are, they're hacking back in there 10, 12 feet, in some other municipalities on those right-of-ways. So who is really responsible for that? I do feel that the utilities have the responsibilities, there are poles, especially the ones on Nusai Road at the cemetery. Look at the overhang there, it's been a knockout Verizon, there's some serious lines, there's some serious, and some really serious high-power. And those old pine trees that were planted, as you read the article, where the tombstones were, where the guy grew corn, they're going to fall and take out a lot. So this is a bigger thing than us, our checkbook. I really feel the utilities have self-preservation. I've said before, they need to be proactive, rather than? I've said before, they need to be proactive, rather than reactive, on this trimming. A lot of this could be theirs, but, you know, if you're a homeowner, we're not gonna send letters there, but you could ask them to. But you are correct. I looked at another problem there, on a range, sent to me. I see what it is, there's one there, Colonial, and the overhang there. There's a bunch, you know?
Yep.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Miller. Just want to remind everybody, if you're continuing to speak, please come back up to the mic, so we're recording. Thank you. Is there any other public comment? No public comment. I don't think we have a board member comment on the agenda, but I just wanted to say a couple of things as well about last week. It was really great to see the community come together and celebrate Independence Day at various events, the fireworks on Thursday, Lower Paxton Community Foundation had a celebration on Saturday, and on Sunday, we had a concert at Heroes Grove. It was really great to see all the residents come out, and to be with our neighbors. This is what being a part of a community is all about, so thank you. But we do have to thank those people that made these events possible. Our Public Safety Department Director Khashiba, and Deputy Fire Chief Graham, Lieutenant Loopy, the entire Lower Paxton Township Bureau of Police, as well as Lingelstown Fire Company, who co-hosted the fireworks, and the other two fire companies, Paxtonia and Colonial Park, who are also present at the fireworks to support the event. After seeing that command center at the fireworks, I was just overcome with pride, with gratitude for our Public Safety Department. We are so lucky to have the honor of living in this township, that's represented by so many deeply committed public servants. I was just in awe at the level of coordination of those resources. I really don't think that there's anything that we can do or say to express our appreciation for all of you, so I'll just say thank you. Thank you for taking the holidays away from your family to take care of us. Thank you for protecting us last week, and thank you for all you do every day to make this township a better and a safer place to live. So, please give me a hand in giving them a round of applause. And last but not least, on Sunday morning, there were a number of volunteers who showed up in the hot sun to pick up trash at Coons Park after the fireworks. Lisa Hannah and her family, as well as a group of young men from Holy Name of Jesus School, and I will make sure to tell Sister Reader that they were there, doing their community service, as well as Candace and Michael Ricker and their daughter. Some of these volunteers didn't even attend the fireworks, but they came out to clean up the park, because they really care about their community and the township, and the place that they live in. There are some really good people in this township, like our public safety professionals, that make this community a really great place to live. We need to make sure we recognize them. So, on behalf of the board, thank you to all those volunteers who cleaned up the parks. Thank you for your time, your dedication, and your selfless efforts. We appreciate it. Are there any other board member comments? Okay. Now for the fun stuff, let's move on to introduce our interim township manager, Mr. Vernau. I know I said a few things about Mr. Vernau last week. Most importantly, he's a township resident. He has been since 1988, and he has extensive experience in municipal management. He was with Lower Allen as the Finance Director from 1988 to 2006, and then he was their manager from 2006 until his recent retirement. He was the past president of the Association for PA Municipal Management, and the Government Finance Officers Association. We are really lucky to have him help guide us through this transition. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Vernau, if he'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Ms. Kurtz. I was gonna ask, I was gonna start off by saying, how many people are Lower Paxton Township residents? I assume you all are. So am I. As Ms. Kurtz said, I've lived here since 1988, for two years in Paxtonia, and the remaining time in Lingelstown. I've lived just a couple of blocks off of Coons Park. So, I also appreciate the folks that came out, including your family, to come out the day after to clean up. Again, yeah, I've been a manager for a long time, Finance Director before that, finance is my background. Before I got into local government, I was an independent public accountant in Florida, where I lived for five years, right after college. And I did work for the Southwest Florida Water Management District, which is how I got my taste for government. Moved back up here in, again, 19, late 1987, to the Pittsburgh area, because my family's from there, and my wife and I had had two children by that time, and I decided they needed to know their families. So, that's why we moved back up to Pennsylvania, moved out to Harrisburg for a job opportunity, and I've been here ever since. It's, I'm retired on December 31st, just six months ago, and I've been happily retired. I wasn't, I was easing into doing nothing quite. I do have a sort of a part-time, what I would call a retirement job. But when, and I did follow what was going on with the township, and when I got the call to consider coming in and helping out, as Mr. Gutschall was leaving, I had to put a lot of thought into it, but again, it is my township, too. I've lived here a long time, and if I can use my, whatever talents I have, to get the township through this rocky period, I'm glad to do so. So, again, it's a pleasure to be here, it's a pleasure to work with these folks. So far, I can tell you, the staff that I've encountered have been stellar. So, I'm looking forward to working with them. And I'm open to any questions you might have for me.
Name is Joe Lindsay, 6244, over at Ullane. I don't have any questions for you, sir, because I've been told a lot about you, all has been positive, but I want to thank you for the comment you made about the staff here in Lower Paxton Township, because the last seven years, they've been looked down upon for everything that they've done by the past manager, and I'm sure they all welcome a breath of fresh air, and welcome to Lower Paxton Township.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Vernau? Well, thank you, and welcome, and we look forward to working with you for the next couple Okay, now on to some really fun and exciting, oh, and my, Adam, my, sorry, my keyboard's not working to advance the slides, I apologize. Will you, okay, go ahead and move on to the next slide, if you don't mind. There are copies, too, at that table back there. Is it, is it my computer that's frozen? Oh, was that me or you? Can you select the hyperlink? Okay, we can all briefly start. There are a couple of slides, this might be more context to you if you have the printout. I just wanted to briefly discuss with the public and the board, some ideas that I have for economic development in this township. One is to create a development authority. So, the Economic Development Financing Law was established in 1967. It was enacted to promote economic development within the state, recognizing the need to build, improve, and finance the operations of municipalities, and promote public and private infrastructure. This statute permits authorities to be created for the purpose of administering projects, industrial facilities, commercial facilities, public facilities, and other types of facilities that are included within the Purposes and Powers Section of the Act. The law provides for a method of incorporating development authorities by resolution or ordinance by this township, and these types of authorities can exist for a period of up to 50 years. The governing body, which would be this Board of Supervisors, would appoint no less than five members to the Authority Board. Now, one of the main purposes of having an authority is to finance projects with tax-exempt or taxable bonds. There are two basic types of tax-exempt obligations. There's direct obligations and conduit. Those obligations that are issued by a state or political subdivision for their own projects are direct obligations, but there's also conduit financings. Those are issued by an authority, which serves as a conduit issuer, for the benefit of another entity, which is the conduit borrower. So, what does this mean? Not only would these authorities be able to finance their own economic development projects, but they can serve as a conduit issuer, and issue debt where a borrower is a 501(c)(3) or a small manufacturer. So, what does that mean in our township? We could also help these types of entities finance their projects. And this is important, because this could be a source of revenue for the township. Issuers usually charge a fee, some percentage of the amount of the borrowing for the financing. Keep scrolling. Okay, up. Up a little bit more, please. All right, that one, perfect. Yep. So, we just talked about the two types of financings, and the types of tax-exempt debt. But right there, you'll see the structure. Borrowings can be done through local banks, or the bond market, depending on, you know, the credit and interest rates of some of these borrowers. But I just want to give a brief overview of this financing mechanism, because I think it's really important to see what we could do if we had an authority. There are various state and federal tax code implications that we'd have to follow, but this is just one idea on how to support economic development in our township. Can we scroll to the next slide, please? There are other economic development tools that we can utilize as well. Tax increment financing, Neighborhood Improvement Districts, and Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistant Act, or LERTA. The main benefits of using these tools, we can utilize them to offset high infrastructure or site prep costs, reduce the upfront financial burden on developers, we can encourage growth in underutilized areas, and we can support long-term tax base. So, these are the definitions here. If you take a handout, you'll be able to read them. I know you can't see them, but we'll go through them very briefly on the next couple of slides. So, if you just want to scroll down one more. Okay. So, the first tool, which we do need an authority for, would be tax increment financing, and usually here, it referred to as a TIF. It is a tax-based incentive program. It's used by authorities to encourage development and redevelopment of certain properties. I think TIFs were first thought of and used in the 50s in California. They do exist now in various forms in all of the 49 states and DC. Over the years, TIFs have become increasingly important as a method to spur economic development. I think Chicago has one of the most aggressive TIF programs. I think roughly 25% of most of the real property is subject to a TIF arrangement. So, how does a TIF program work? Once an area is designated as a TIF district, the tax revenue generated from the properties within the TIF district are split into two different components, base taxes and incremental taxes. Base taxes, that's your green box right there on the bottom, they continue to go to the taxing bodies, as they usually would, and those incremental taxes, or a portion thereof, that's that blue area, they're dedicated to the project for a certain number of years. TIFs in Pennsylvania can only be extended for a term of 20 years. That gold box there, it illustrates the end of the TIF, when the new tax revenues, which are inclusive of both base taxes and incremental taxes, flows to the taxing bodies following the completion of the TIF. So, you see there that that bottom box, that green box, is the current assessed value, the revenue that's going to the municipalities, and that's, the green box is where all the properties will stay, if there was no economic development to increase that assessed value. Can you scroll to the next slide, please? So, with all of these different tools, there are pros and cons. I'm gonna tell you that none of them are perfect, but I do think that the TIF program helps achieve various objectives, most commonly to increase property values, to create new jobs, which results in more revenue in the form of income taxes. Without TIFs, some projects would never happen, but TIFs aren't always utilized due to political pushback. Some municipalities don't want to forego the tax revenues for a certain period of time. So, they're not perfect, but they've been heavily utilized across the Commonwealth. I've done them, I've done these types of projects with my firm. One of the most successful that I've done are the Kalahari and the Camelback projects, if you'll remember. A lot of times, we take out financing, bond issues, or bank loans to finance the site prep. It's done on a tax-exempt basis, and then when the property's completed, the construction is done. That incremental revenue from the increased assessed values is used as security to pay debt service on that financing. So, these have been successful, some of them are unsuccessful, but it's a great tool that I think we should at least be considering in this township. Move on to the next. Okay, there's another tool, Neighborhood Improvement Districts. The primary purpose of NIDS is to allow property owners within the district to collectively fund improvements and services that enhance the district beyond standard services. So, property owners within a NID are charged a special assessment fee, and these fees are collected by the municipality. Once a NID is established, that municipality then has to set up an association or an authority that can administer the programs, the improvements, and the services within the district. NID funds can be used for a wide range of improvements and services, including physical improvements, like sidewalks, street paving, parks, street lighting, parking lots, trees, and shrubbery, and enhanced services, like additional trash collection, security services, public relations, advertising, business retention efforts, and other purposes. Next slide, please. So, NIDS allow for each district to determine what improvements and services are right for them, which benefit the entire district, and not just one parcel or project. But administering the program takes buy-in from developers or property owners, and is subject to ongoing costs to administer the program. So, again, NIDS are also a great tool. There are actually some TIFs and NIDS that are contiguous with each other, and the TIF revenues support the payment of debt service on bonds, and the NIDS are there as additional security, as a backstop, to the extent that the tax increment revenues are sufficient. So, we've seen this done in the Kalahari financing, and it's been utilized in other financings across the state, just to enhance the security of tax increment financing as well. All right, next slide, please. I promise we're almost done. The last tool I wanted to talk about are LERTAs. I think this one is the most commonly understood tool. It is a tax abatement on all, or a portion of property, for new construction in deteriorated areas of economically depressed communities, and for improvements of certain industrial, commercial, or business properties. And this exemption can be up to 10 years on a property. The tool does require a recommendation, taking into account criteria set forth under the Urban Redevelopment Law, as well as the Neighborhood Assistance Act for the determination of blighted and impoverished areas. So, we'd have to look for things like unsafe, unsanitary, and overcrowded buildings, vacant, overgrown, and unsightly lots of ground, a disproportionate number of tax delinquent properties, excessive land coverage, defective design, or arrangement of building streets or lot layouts, as well as economically and socially undesirable land uses. So, I think that there are some properties in the township that we could probably think that LERTAs might be right for, right? Next slide, please. So, this is the last slide. I just want to disclaim that there are issues, pros and cons, limitations with each tool, but I think for LERTAs, unlike the others, it doesn't really provide an upfront revenue stream that can be monetized to help fund upfront improvement costs for developers or site prep, but it is really nice to have this exemption. We know that it doesn't terminate upon the sale or exchange of property. So, to the extent that property changes hands, it's a useful thing to attract developers or potential purchasers. So, we're at the end. There's a last slide there that I'll take any questions anybody may have. I know this was a very, very simplistic and brief overview of a few economic development tools, but I do think it's really important that the public and this board start considering the creation of a development authority. I think it's, would benefit us to have board members that are either developers, or knowledgeable, or have the expertise in the area of economic development, that can kind of lead the way for the township and this board to promote economic development in our township. So, with that, any questions? Mr. Clare?
Give me a second.
Of course.
Jeff Clare, 2648 Amanda Drive. I totally appreciate your I totally appreciate your comments, Chair. I do have some experience in economic development. I've done it for a few days. The economy is no longer a local economy. It's a global economy. Over the last seven years while I've done economic development, I have traveled close to a million miles. I've been every country looking for businesses that want to get out or expand. I've gotten calls over the last several months from New York City, San Francisco, places where people no longer want to operate a business because of high costs. Lower Paxton Township has zero marketing materials. When I go to an investment meeting, there's nothing to leave behind to show the reasons why people want to locate to Lower Paxton Township. As much as I believe that a financing authority would be a welcome addition to the township, there are a lot of other key points that need to be put into the envelope to make it a success. Every transaction requires both a buyer and a seller. And what we're selling here is a great way of life, peace and harmony for families. But when I go to an economic development forum, there's 400 other cities, just like, or locations like Lower Paxton Township, all vying for the same thing: spend that company's money in a new location. So when you think about creating this authority, there's other pieces to that pie that need to be added to it before it's going to be able to be successful.
Thank you, Mr. Clair. And I do appreciate that. And the other cities and municipalities that are probably successful in attracting those developers probably have some form of economic development tools that they're, that they can utilize for kind of incentivizing them to come in, correct? So we're talking about the TIFs, the NIDS, the authorities that can serve as these conduit issuers so that they can do financing on a tax-exempt basis. These incentives will attract those purchasers. We do need buyers. We'd need people to come in to the township.
When Bass Pro bought Cabela's for $8 billion, you would think with all the money in the world, they wouldn't have any issues. They used to finance it.
Yep.
It's an opportunity for companies to really work in a partnership with the township and not just.
Right. It's just one small portion of that capital stack that developers need. It might be the last incentive just to bring their business here. Thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Wensker.
Any local examples?
There are a number of townships, municipalities, counties that have development, industrial development, economic development, financing authorities. Mr. Vernet is here, and he can speak to Lower Allen Township. You're probably aware of the parcel where Trader Joe's is. They had their authority undertake a financing to purchase that property. They redeveloped it, and they had developers come in and purchase the property. So I think they actually did pretty well on that transaction.
Yeah, the key there is we had the Economic Development Authority in place 10 years before we actually did that project. We had finished a comp plan and identified four areas of the township for targeted development. And I convinced our Board of Commissioners over there that we should have a development authority to help, to be focused on that, that development, because staff has other things to do, the elected officials have other things to do. And if you have people that are laser-focused on that development, things can happen. And luckily, when that opportunity came up, when Von Ton announced that they were selling the building, we were in a position to act and acquire it and build what you see over there now. So I definitely think in economic development for a township, the size of Lower Paxton Township, with all the land and opportunities we have here, I think it's definitely a good idea to be, just so that we're positioned and ready to move when we, when the opportunity presents itself. And I think we have some opportunities right now that are presenting themselves.
Robin Lindsay, 6244, overview. I just have some questions, and I know you can't answer them, but it is some questions that you might want to think about. So who would be the board members? Would they be residents, or would they be coming from the outside?
I believe they would be township residents.
Okay, and you don't have to answer because I don't want to put you on the spot, okay? What would their terms be? Are they going to be a five-year term, four-year term? Just something to think about.
Yeah. When you, I can answer that. When you create an authority at the initial outset, the five members, their board terms have to be staggered, so you'd have one for five, four, three, two, and one.
I knew that, but I wanted you to tell me that. Okay. What would, they would, their qualifications? I think they would need to have some type of real estate qualification, some type of a financial background also. I think there should be no conflict of interest. I think there should be no political involvement whatsoever. Again, when they're applying, they need to know how much time's going to be required to be on this authority. And the big question, will they be paid? Will they be paid with taxpayers' dollars? We do pay the sewer authority members. You know, they get $100 for every meeting. Supervisors normally don't take that pay because they are getting paid as a supervisor, but that's another question. I know that Dauphin County Authority pays their authority members probably more, you know, than $100. Who would be, and I'm just asking questions, you don't have to answer them. Who would be handling the bonds? And then another thing, who would be overseeing that authority? Would it be the board of supervisors? Would it be the manager? Would it be the finance director? So just some questions that when you are thinking about developing this authority, that you can put them down and, you know, just answer them, because if residents are applying, they're going to need to know. So, thank you.
Thank you. And there are a lot of details that we'll have to take into consideration if the board and the public is in favor of moving forward with this. But just a few things. It would be my intention that we would put a notice out and advertise for board members as we do with all of the other township authorities. They would be volunteer, and we would make sure that a firm, a law firm that has no conflict, would handle the matters. So we appreciate your in-depth questions, and we'll make sure we look into them as we move forward. Appreciate it. Moving on. The grant overview, Mr. Jaroslawski, go ahead.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Matt Jaroslawski. I'm the Director of Public Works. Over the next 10 minutes or so, we're just going to kind of talk about the Planning and Demonstration Grant that we have been approved for, for the township and across several municipalities in our area. Big part of this grant is, it's tied under the Infrastructure and Jobs Act, which is allocating $5 billion over the previous three years and the next two years towards making our streets safe. The Safe Streets and Roads for All Program aligns with the National Roadway Safety Strategy. Their overall goal is to reduce deaths or injuries across the nation, deaths down to zero is one of their lofty goals. So it's good that we're a part of that. I'll just kind of start out with what's in it for us as a township, and I think you'll agree with me towards the end of this demonstration that as a township, this is a great leadership opportunity for us across the MPO, and it's also a great entry point into utilizing federal funds for some of our projects, both over the next year and as well into the future. So this, as I said, is a Planning and Demonstration Grant, which essentially means that we are going to look at different ways to improve the safety of our streets. It doesn't necessarily include construction of major infrastructure, but it collects really good information and allows for the MPOs to make determinations on the best way forward for, for major decisions. We've also applied for a Infrastructure Development Grant as well this year, so hopefully we'll hear back on that as well. Just some terms here. The Harrisburg Area Transportation Study, that's the HATS. They are operating as our municipal planning organization, which is MPO, for this project. Through HRG's efforts, we were able to identify this grant opportunity and secure an approval for the planning and demonstration. One of the key factors that the approving authorities are interested in is that your municipality has a MPO, aligning your priorities across the region, and HATS being our MPO has been a great help in doing the legwork for this grant opportunity. As far as Lower Paxton Township, we were seen as the lead municipality for this grant. That encourages some additional work, which I'll get into here shortly, but it's going to pay dividends, I think, across the township as we, as we assist through this grant program. Up there, there's eight different municipalities, both townships and boroughs, that are, that are all signed on to, to do some planning and demonstration, planning with us, and hopefully within the next couple of months, we'll really solidify what those projects look like, especially for us, so we know what we're getting out of the deal. Little bit of the history here. The idea with the application of this grant was to focus on those three areas up there. I apologize, it's a little bit of, little difficult to read, but I'll go through them here. A series of demonstration projects in the region to test solutions. One of our demonstration projects was going to be to build a temporary overpass over Union Deposit. It was a pretty lofty demonstration ask, and that one was, was shot down essentially. But we do have additional, additional areas where we're going to benefit from this grant. The next goal was the development of a regional guide for demonstration projects. That regional guide really is going to assist us, as well as other municipalities, in future grant opportunities. Once you have that guide, it's essentially your playbook for reapplying for future, future federal grants, which many of you know have additional stipulations and requirements that often keep smaller municipalities out of the federal grant realm. Kittelston is HATS consultant, and they have done several of these, these guides previously. Right now, we're working with PennDOT to essentially secure some upfront funding to see if, if we can get Kittelston to develop that guide for us. The last goal is a series of road safety audits at select locations in the region. And for Lower Paxton, we have two road safety audits, RSAs, that we're going to look at. This is just a list of essentially the general areas that the different municipalities are interested in conducting these road safety audits. What these road safety audits will do is study historically dangerous areas throughout our municipalities and basically determine what would be the best way forward to alleviate some of the congestion, some of the accidents, things like that, in those areas. For Lower Paxton Township specifically, that's the third one down, the area of Union Deposit between Larry Drive and Lakewood Drive. Essentially, that's Union Deposit as it straddles 83, both east and west. And then also Allentown and Jonestown Boulevard between Park Chester Road and Mountain Road. Next two slides, we'll just skip because those numbers need to be updated, and we should have those straight here within a couple of weeks. This is our, one of our potential approaches. So we, we need to identify who, within each municipality, is going to be the main decision-makers and as well as the, you know, the consultants for the projects. Not every other municipality uses HRG like, like we do, so it just takes a little bit of research to find whether or not they desire to use their own consultant, or whether they want to have HRG facilitate some of the work for them, just for continuity. The demonstration projects, we're going to discuss some of the options with the other municipalities to see what they're, what they're interested in. The demonstration projects are more in-depth than the RSAs because, obviously, it's going to affect traffic. The purpose of those demonstration projects, for instance, you may have a traditional four-way intersection that you put barriers out to make it a temporary traffic circle. And then, then that is studied, monitored. It's all non-permanent infrastructure. They can tear it down at the end of the demonstration, but they've got their data as to whether or not the intersection was safer, or less maintenance, things of that nature. So we're going to work to identify those areas with the other municipalities, and we should have a list here within the next month. Next slide, please. So this, this is a, it's going to be a heavy lift for the township, but it's going to be beneficial. We have HRG that can provide a lot of the administration for us. One of the requirements for this grant is that the reimbursement must flow through, you know, the township. So that's going to be us. It's going to be a matter of keeping track of both supplies and costs associated with these projects as they, as they go underway. We do plan, I talked to HRG this week and last week, and essentially what we're going to do is streamline the process as much as possible, so that each township submits the same paperwork, we can see the same numbers, to prevent, you know, any undue burden on the, on the staff within the township. Okay, so we're going to meet with the HATS and basically solidify what these projects are going to be. As you saw, it was a couple within each municipality, so we'll just, we'll make sure we get those down solid as to what they're, and why. We'll be meeting with the municipalities individually to make sure that, that we're meeting the mark as far as being the lead township on this grant. And then we'll also be working directly with our solicitor to ensure that all the agreements and timelines can be, can be kept throughout this entire grant process. So our next steps essentially are, we're going to information find, in fact, find under HATS through all the municipalities, solidify the projects, and then come to an agreement with the Federal Highway Administration before signing into the final agreement with them. So pending any questions, that's all I have for this presentation.
Thank you. One question for you. From the time that you finalize and you sign the agreement, what usually is the timeframe for receipt of those grant funds?
So the grant funds, I'm told, are fairly fast for this, for this specific grant. I've heard anywhere from each month to, at the most, every quarter.
Okay.
And it's fairly responsive. So us, to be able to redistribute those reimbursements to the individual townships, it shouldn't be too much of a, too much of a burden on them.
Thank you. Are there any other supervisor questions? Any public questions on the presentation? Okay. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right, moving on to announcements. Any announcements from the managers, supervisors? Okay, seeing none, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
All right.
All those in. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight.